Welcome, everybody, to this glorious day of ours. Isn't it a wonderful day out?
We're scheduled to council here in such a beautiful place.
You know, Henry, I'm supposed to act on that, but I'm gonna act like I didn't hear you. Good point. Welcome, everybody, to our regular city council meeting. Today is March 12th. Well, a change of date on the regular scheduled meeting. Today's March 12th, 2024, and it's 6:01 PM. We'll begin this meeting, as always, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna ask Barb to read the Clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you please take role also, Barb?
Sure. Mayor Smith?
Here.
Colin Dijkstra?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Dimitri Martin? Paul Mayo?
Here.
Corey Nagel? Eric Olson?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Scott Porczatski?
Here.
Henry Velicker?
Here.
Seven present, we have a quorum.
All right. Thanks, Barb.
You're welcome.
Do you want to start the introductions of the department heads, please?
Sure. Barb Noack, City Clerk.
Aaron Jensen, City Administrator.
Matt Klett, Airport Manager.
Jared Kivala, Community and Economic Development.
Stephanie Reif, Finance Director.
Justin Behrens, Director of Public Works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec Director.
Brian Hosele, Chief of Police.
Well, thank you for those introductions. Let's go right to the consent agenda. You have a consent agenda in front of you with a number of items on there. Does anybody want to see anything there moved to the regular agenda? If not, we'd need a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Dijkstra, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. Regular agenda. Again, we have nothing new to add to the agenda tonight, so if you would, we would just need a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
You guys have to work harder. We only have seven tonight. Motion by Peterson, second by Olson, that we approve the regular agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say no. Motion carried. We are under non-agenda items, announcements, and correspondence. We actually have a presentation of certificate for Shelley Mortzfeldt for five years of service to the city of Wapaka. She's our utility billing clerk in the Finance Department. She is not here tonight, so I'll give this to Barb, and she can give that to Shelley. Is that okay?
Sure.
Tomorrow? All right. Next up, I'm gonna turn it over, actually, to the police chief. We have their, the police department's annual report.
Yeah, thank you. The department worked really hard to get this done as quick as possible, and we asked Jim Schultz, who I believe, Mayor, would you say, last year, 26, 27 years on the commission?
A lo- way too long.
Yeah. Jim has come here tonight to give the presentation for us, so I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thank you, Chief. My name is James Schultz. I live on Fox Fire Court in Wapaka. And as just alluded to, rather rudely, I am a longtime member of the Police and Fire Commission. I've been on so long that I have to wear reading glasses now. Mayor Smith, AJ, Ms. Noack, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, the Wapaka Police Department, and we can sort of flip through this if you want as we go, has 17 sworn officers. We have one full-time civilian employee and two part-time civilian employees. Together, we serve nearly 6,400 residents here in the city of Wapaka. But overall, including the Chain Lakes and those townships that surround our city, we actually serve more than 30,000 people with our department. If you look at our staff, and normally, we wouldn't do this. This is, you wouldn't think this is an important part of the report. But I want to draw your attention to the fact that about half of our department has been here five years or less. The other half of our department has been here seven, eight, 10, 20 years. And what this allows us to do consistently is promote from within. And I want you to know that this is not a lucky happenstance. This is part of a plan that Chief Hosele and Captain Benchall and officers preceding them have put in place so that we can build a complete and efficient department for the future. And if you look at the way that's structured, you can see how our officers, their training and their experience, will keep on giving to the point that we will be able to maximize every hire we have. I'm skipping ahead a little bit, but Captain Benchall's report continues the trend that there are fewer applicants any time we post a job for a police department. And it isn't just us, it's nationwide. We live in an environment where there are fewer people who look at law enforcement as a career choice. So our department has done a number of creative things to make it attractive for law enforcement officers to come here from other departments. We have hired officers from other departments, including the Wapaka County Sheriff's Department. One of the creative things we've done, and more than once, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, we've actually sponsored an officer to go to school, go to the Fox Valley Technical College Police Training Program, helped him enroll and get through that program. And then upon his successful completion of classes and graduation, we get to hire that officer. We did that last year. That officer has since completed his field training and is now a full-time patrol officer. We're growing our own. Training is an important part of what goes on at any department. The state of Wisconsin requires that police officers take a minimum of 24 hours of training every year. Here in Wapaka, your officers average more than twice that, over 50 hours of training a year. What that results in is a number of very well-trained officers. What we have done is encourage those officers to share everything they learned in that training with other officers, so that we end up with more well-trained officers. And again, with an eye toward promoting from within and having the most effective and efficient department. It's our goal of building a police department for the future, and that includes some new gear that I'll talk about in a minute. Policing is only part of the equation for successful law enforcement. Local involvement, team-building, trust, and personal relationships all lead to better community relations. Our officers and staff volunteer and donate to numerous events, organizations, and sports teams, from your local church to the ballpark to the National Guard. You're gonna see our officers representing and serving Wapaka. Last year, Chief Hosele attended Legislative Advocacy Day in Madison, representing Wapaka in discussions about the way, ways that laws affect the police and our citizens. Other things, there's just a whole bunch. You can just sort of whip through these. I'm not gonna explain them all, because I promised I'd hold this to 45 minutes. There's Camp Judea, lunch at Lakeman Field. We served absolute world-class barbecue and completely ran out. Sergeant Wes Zuby continues to teach a highly sought-after class on mental health and suicide prevention. The class provides a firsthand account of dealing with the pain and trauma of suicide. Last year, at Sergeant Zuby's recommendation and with his help, a new resource guide was created for people who struggle with mental health and for the caregivers who deal with them. And that either is available or will be shortly. It's going to be available this year. Numerous agencies continue to contact us, wondering if they can borrow Sergeant Zuby to give this presentation. Nursing schools, government agencies, police departments, everybody wants to be a part of the program that was created here in Wapaka. You saw us on Halloween on Main. I saw you down there. Did you check out Miller's Pumpkins? Did anybody notice that Chief Hosele's badge was recreated on one of those pumpkins? Seriously? We visited the Sunny Day Childcare Center. We had Sergeant Zuby and Officers Bat and Jensen show up so the kids could actually get up close and personal with squad cars and ask questions about being a policeman. There was some confusion, I understand, after the program as to whether or not Officer Bat is actually Batman. The truth is, nobody has ever seen both of them together at the same time, so. Holiday for Heroes, I'm not going to explain to you, but if, and I understand you guys all have a lot to do, but take this home, and during the commercials, read parts of this report. Page 11, read Holidays for Heroes. You need to know what your department is involved in. Police Lights for Christmas, the creation of the Community Outreach Committee and countless positive interactions with local citizens and visitors continues to have a positive impact on this department and our community. I said we had to talk about gear. It's a tool. It's something we count on, it's something we need, but the fact is, some of it is just cool. Staying abreast of the latest technology is imperative for efficiency at a crime scene, an accident, or a fire. Finding victims, locating evidence, or finding the bad guys is a primary goal. And new equipment helps us be better at that. Flock cameras are located around the city. You might not know what they are, but they can actually read a license plate, connect to a computer, and find out if that's the stolen car we're looking for or if that's the missing person that we've been searching for. There's a Broco breaching tool, looks like something from a Schwarzenegger movie. The Rocket Tower Lights were bought with a grant from Wisconsin Public Service, and they allow us to literally light up an incident scene, accident or crime scene, enabling us to look for victims, assess injuries. It is helpful to first responders at the scene. It also helps us gather evidence, even if it's just taking photographs to record a scene. Having a well-lit area is necessary. Another page I really want you, when the commercial comes on, check out page 15. You've all seen what drones are doing these days. They're everywhere. And you can see why the value and potential of this new equipment is limitless. And we are really grateful to the Tim and Joy Neville Family Fund for their generosity. Right now, we have three officers who are trained to pilot our drone. We've worked with the private sector and other pilots to make sure that we will be able to maximize the use of this valuable piece of technology. And it's still cool. The police are called to investigate crimes, accidents, fires, acts of violence. Investigating and evidence gathering start as soon as the crime scene or incident scene is safe and the injured are being attended to. Last year, evidence gathered in a homicide investigation that goes all the way back to 2020 led to a guilty verdict and a life sentence for the perpetrator. Sensitive crimes like domestic assault, sexual assault, child abuse require a enhanced level of training and compassion. The Wapaka Police Department works with the Department of Health and Human Services, CAP Services, the DA's office, and in the case of juveniles, we also work with the Child Advocacy Center. Our department is also prior, the countywide Sexual Assault Response Team. And I wish I didn't have to include this in the report, but the fact is, last year, we responded to over 90 of these sensitive crimes. We also responded to over 200 property crimes, which is up slightly from a year ago. Last year, we investigated 83 drug-related incidents, including multiple overdoses, and two are suspected overdose fatalities. As a result, 68 felonies, 58 misdemeanors, and dozens of city ordinance citations were issued. Our designated narcotics officer was also active in the Central Wisconsin Drug Task Force, and there he was involved in 29 more investigations countywide that resulted in the confiscation of methamphetamine, marijuana, fentanyl, and other drugs. If you look at page 18 in the packet, you can see how that impacts Wapaka. Last year, we responded to over 200 traffic crashes, including 28 hit-and-run incidents. We conducted over 1,200 traffic stops, and you can see just how many warnings and citations were issued if you look at page 21. The final pages of the report break down the actual number of every type of complaint and crime and compares it to the last several years. And just so you know, this is a type of complete record-keeping we do every day at Wapaka PD. Your department remains busy, vigilant, and at your service. If you have any questions, you may address them to myself or to Chief Hosele. We'll be happy to find you an answer. And before I close, may I, I'm sure I speak for everybody in the council chambers when I wish his honor a happy birthday. And I'm sorry you're spending it at a meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody have any comments or questions? All right. Well, thanks a lot, Jim. Thanks for coming. Oh, go ahead.
Where can we get a copy of that? I know it's posted online.
We're gonna put it online, and we can also email it to you. So I was going, I talked with Aaron today in regards to that. So if you would like it emailed to your address at YF for the city, we can do that.
Thanks. Any other comments, questions? All right. Well, Jim, we appreciate you coming in tonight and all your service on that fire commission. Next up, we have public input. This is for non-agenda items. If there's anybody in the audience or council or staff that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda tonight, raise your hand or step up to the podium and limit your time to three minutes or less. Any, any public input? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to unfinished business. This is ordinance number 022024. An ordinance amending chapter 17 point 102 of the zoning district map as allowed under 17.700 of the building code. And this is the second reading, so we will be looking for some kind of vote as we go through this tonight. Jared, you wanna lead us through this?
Of course, happy to. This one starts on page 11 of your packets. Starting on page 12 is the staff report with the visuals of where this is located. But this is looking to rezone Lakeman Field. Staff, we recently went through a process to ensure the property lines between the new Department of Public Works facility parcel and Lakeman Field. We're in the correct location to provide Lakeman Field enough room to do whatever future expansions they would need to do, parking, et cetera. So that once that line is created, now we are looking to rezone Lakeman Field to the Parks District. The Parks District will allow for a little bit more flexibility on what can go on there. A park is usually pretty unique, you know, in that it has playground equipment, pavilions, things like that. So it doesn't necessarily follow a typical zoning district. So that is why the Parks District is the better district to put it in. So just looking to transition that parcel to a Parks District. And of course, this is the second reading.
Thanks, Jared. And no comments from the public that you've?
No comments from my side, and I don't know if Laura got any.
All right. Anybody have any questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we approve of ordinance number 022024. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Colin Dijkstra?
Uh, yeah, uh, yes, aye, sorry. Aye.
You can only vote one.
Just one aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Jared, thanks.
Of course.
Next up, we have Old Car Show Club of Wapaka. This is a request to block off parking stalls on East Fulton Street. And they came in with a request. You can see on page 20 and, what does it go, 20 and 21, it looks like, is their request, from what I understand, Barb, and maybe you can help me a little bit here, they're gonna do exactly what they did last year there.
Correct. Yep, they would like the stalls, I think, were blocked off around 2:00 in the afternoon till about 8:00 on Wednesdays.
Okay. Thanks. And they, you can see that they have their rules for their members on page 21. I think it's, they did a nice job of making sure that they leave it the way, the way they received it. So I think, and I think it's a good thing for the downtown area. So again, since it's on city property here, we would need a motion to allow them to do that.
Make a motion that we accept the request as it's been presented by the Old Car Club of Wapaka?
Motion by Velicker.
Second.
Second by Peterson, that we approve the request by the Old Car Club of Wapaka. Any further discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatski?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right. Barb, thank you. Next up, we have a couple of resolutions. We're gonna do these separate, of course, but probably one presentation here. But we have resolution number 1557. This is a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of, not to exceed $1.6 million in Sewerage System Revenue Bonds, Series 2024 for the city of Wapaka, Wapaka County. And Aaron, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, the resolution's on page 22 of your packet. I'll set this up very briefly, and I'm gonna set up this one and the next resolution. This one's the Sewerage Bonds, and then the next one is the GEO Bonds. Just, I want to compare what we passed in the capital budget in the fall. Our GEO Bonds are actually less than what we passed, or than what we're talking about tonight. We passed 1.102 million. We're here tonight asking for 1.040 million. And then the Sewerage is a little more, we're at 1.6 in the capital budget planning process. We asked for 1.555. Justin's gonna explain what some of those overages are. Both of these do include issuance costs with those. And with that, I'll kick it over to Justin.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. It's great to see everyone again. At that time of the year, we've been working with city staff to look at the different capital improvement projects and update our long-term plan that we maintain for the city. So tonight, what I'll do is I'll go through the summary of the two financings, go through the timeline, the GEO Long-Term Financing Illustration and Borrowing Capacity, and then the Sewer System Revenue Financing Illustration. So on page, if you go to that first page there, the first issuance is the General Obligation Promissory Notes in the amount of $1,040,000 to fund the 2024 CIP projects. This is all your levy-supported projects that were in your, your five-year CIP. It's gonna mature March 1, 2025, to 2034, and the first interest being next year, March 1, 2025. Will be callable March 1, 2031, or any date thereafter, meaning that's when you can refinance or potentially prepay it. And the estimated interest rate is a 4%. The other issuance will be a Sewer System Revenue Bonds in the amount of $1,600,000 for the 24 CIP projects. This is gonna be maturing May 1, 2025, to 2039, with the first interest November 1, 2024. Callable again, May 1, 2031, and the estimated interest rate for that is a 4.75%. So the timeline here is, we've been working with Aaron, Stephanie, and staff to go through the process of getting the offering document put together. We're in good shape there. We recently did the bond rating call, which I asked Aaron before if he's shared the good news, but it sounds like he has not. Stephanie, myself, and Aaron participated on a bond rating call with Standard &amp; Poor's, which we do on an annual basis when we go through this process. And fortunately, with all the good news going on in the city and the continued financial improvements that they've seen, they decided to upgrade the city to one notch, to the double A-minus category. So that was very welcome news. I didn't, I didn't, wasn't sure where, as I put on the, in the call, I said, you know, I hope it's this year, but I, you know, trying to set the stage that we expect it to be coming soon, because things have been continuing to improve, and especially with the developments potentially coming in here, the valuation growths and so forth. Things are, and the TIDS is also looking much better, you know, overall. So between those different factors, it was, it was pretty exciting to hear that the committee at Standard &amp; Poor's upgraded the city, which will help with interest costs for the, for every borrowing kind of going forward, related to your general obligation debt. So, good news there. So common council would consider the, the Plan of Finance and Depth resolutions tonight. That'll give the authority for sign-off on the bond sales to the mayor, city administrator, or finance director. And then the authorized officer signs the approving certificate. We're scheduled to potentially do that over the next, next few days here. And then closing would be April 8th of 2024. So if we go to page 2, the next page, you can see on this, there's a lot of numbers. Again, you've seen this in the past, but the left side of the page, that's the existing debt service on an annual basis. So that takes into account everything that the city has done leading up to today. The middle of the page is what we're talking about, and as Aaron talked about, the, the actual CIP borrowing amount is $990,000, and then the additional is for issuance costs and other factors there. Then, when we go to the hypothetical future debt service, what we did was we modeled in a million-dollar borrowings every year thereafter, going forward forever. And really kind of want to see what that debt service looked like ultimately to get to the right side of the page, which you can see, we're trying to do very small incremental increases over the next couple of years, and then it basically stays flat going forward. So, you know, Aaron and Stephanie have been working really hard to try to get this, this borrowing down in costs, and they've, they've done a great job, and we continue to look at that going forward. So that also includes the, the remaining portion of the Public Works Facility financing that we're looking at potentially taking out next year, along with the additional million dollars in CIP. So this, this takes everything into account, into the picture. So looking forward, you know, and that was another reason Standard &amp; Poor's, you know, was willing to give this upgrade is because we have a really good long-term plan where there's not gonna be much of an impact, assuming the, the city stays around that million to, you know, million and a half dollars in CIP borrowings every year going forward. So kudos to the, the council for, for getting there. So when we go to page 3 here, this is the financing, or this is the illustration of the general obligation borrowing capacity for the city. So if you recall, municipalities are allowed to borrow up to 5% of your equalized valuation TID in. The city has a, a policy to try not to exceed 3.75% of the 5%. So this, this illustration here shows you at the 3.75%. So you actually have more capacity than what I'm showing you here. But again, we want to try to stay within that policy. The black bars is your existing obligations. As you go year over year, you're paying down that debt. That's why it's decreasing. The, the, kind of the green bar there, that's what we're talking about in the future. Financing is being basically the million dollars every year going forward. The blue is the public works that may take place next year. So we've tried to factor in everything that we can think of, and you still, based on what, you know, a one and a half percent growth factor to, to your valuation, you can see that you still have a good amount of capacity remaining in any particular year. So that's a, that's a good signal to us, because it wasn't too long ago where we were very close to that, that, that policy, and there wasn't much room to be able to take on any additional projects. So this is welcomed, and a lot of it has to do with just the- to be able to take on any additional projects. So this is welcomed, and a lot of it has to do with just the, the general growth of the city naturally, through inflation. So then we go to page four. This is the Long-Term Financing Illustration for the Sewer System Revenue Bonds. And again, the Sewer System Revenue Bonds are a little different than the general obligation in that it's not an unlimited tax levy. You need the sewer utility to make these debt payments. So on the left side of the page, you can see the existing sewer debt service payments. And when you look at that, you can see that there's a nice drop in debt service from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And that was, that was all planned. Ultimately, knowing that we had some, some other capital projects related to sewer utility coming on board here. So that's what this, so that drop was purposeful, and then we're gonna kind of fill in a little bit of it with this financing that we're, we're talking about tonight. And then we've modeled in some of the future capital borrowings that may take place in twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-seven. And ultimately, when you look to the right side of the page, the thing that we wanna see is that the city maintains at least a coverage ratio of one point two five times coverage. What does that mean? For every dollar twenty-five in revenue that you have from the utility, you have a, a dollar in expenditures. So always having more, you know, more revenue than your expenditures, in case something bad happens. And the minimum is a one, one point one zero times coverage. So you can see when you look at this far right side, you're at one point three seven is kind of the minimum that we see. So as long as the net revenues of the utility continue to, to look strong, we should be in good shape to, to be able to get these projects done in the future as well. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Thanks, Justin. Anybody have any questions? Or Justin, I didn't mean to cut you off. Aaron, do you have other comments you want to make?
I just have one comment, Mayor, and council members. I'm, I'm gonna go back up to the Geo Long-Term Capital Improvement Plan page, well, it's on the screen right now. And if we go all the way to the right, I know council, I know, had some heartburn about getting our debt service levy up to the one six six two, as shown here in two thousand twenty-four. I just wanna, and then you can see it climbs up to that high one nines, and then levels off. I just wanna remind council that due to conserving some of the resources in the debt service fund balance, and then also with expected TIF reven, or revenue into this fund from TIF eight, which owes this fund over the next five to seven years, you know, that will close a lot of that gap that you see there for several years. So, just wanted to point that out.
Thanks. Hey, Justin, I do have one question tonight. So the, the Geo note is at four percent interest rate, and the sewer, you're expecting four point seven five. Can you explain why there's a variance?
Yeah. That's a, that's a great question. One, the double A-minus bond credit rating that we have only applies to the general obligation debt. So that in itself is gonna be more attractive to potential purchasers of this debt, ultimately giving a lower interest rate. The other thing is, it's a ten-year financing versus the sewer revenue bonds. It's gonna be a fifteen-year financing. So going out a little bit longer is gonna be a higher rate.
So... That brings up another question for me. I'm trying to figure out how I can answer this. So, we do have capacity within our Geo that we could actually borrow the money for the sewer with Geo and save interest? And then the sewer would pay the city back? Is that?
That is how you could, you could do it. It would eat into your general obligation borrowing capacity. You have the capacity to be able to do so. Now, if you were to do it, yes, you would save a little bit in interest cost to do so. Maybe it would be a, you know, a four and a quarter, four and a half percent versus a four point seven five. So you are gonna still pay a higher interest rate, because it is out longer.
Longer term?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But, yes, you will. You would save.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
And, and I just wanna back up real quick there, because the reason the capacity is so important in this, in this long-term plan is because of all the things going on with the TIF districts. And if there is an opportunity to, to bring in some additional development that may require infrastructure, that we want to have the capacity to be able to do it if that opportunity presents itself. So that was kind of the logic of, you know, keeping it separate from the, the general obligation.
And I get that, although any infrastructure that we put in when we, when we make improvements is probably gonna be sewer and water anyways. And roads, but a lot of it will be sewer and water. So, yeah. I mean, this amount is, I mean, I, I actually was asking that question when, because you're looking at twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-seven, you know, the, at least twenty twenty-five, that borrow was much bigger, and, and, I mean, it would be, maybe it would be to our advantage to look at alternatives.
Yeah. I mean, if this capacity continues to look strong, then it, it would be a possibility that, that makes sense. And we do it for a lot of communities, you know, where that have the, the capacity. It's just, that wasn't necessarily the case too long ago.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
But, you know, things change.
Yeah, I know. Uh, any other questions or comments, Colin? I think you did, yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a thought. I've been kind of, I, I don't know if I'll be able to get this out correctly. We've talked a lot about our TIDS. Right now, as far as the, the state, we're, we're, it requires us to be right at, to issue more TIDS at under twelve percent of, I think the term they use is our equalized value. And as we are developing, we're right there, right now. And as we get more developments, like the, the factory that's being proposed, and the Weeta Housing, and River North, and even development through the Western Street Corridor, which is most of the development that I see in the area, that's gonna push our, our amount of equalized value that's within a TID above that twelve percent. Does that have a negative effect on either the, the bond rating, or any other things related to this, this kind of financing?
No, it does not. It really will only impact the ability to create another TID if a development wants to come in in this different area and want some type of incentive.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, so what we need to do tonight is, and we're just talking about number two and three on your, in your packet, but the first one is resolution number fifteen fifty-seven, and this is, we're kind of doing it in reverse here, I guess, from what how Justin made the presentation. But this is a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale not to exceed one point six million of the Sewerage System Revenue Bonds. So if you have no other questions and you're okay with this, then we would need a motion to approve.
I'd move to approve resolution number fifteen fifty-seven.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Velicker, that we approve resolution number fifteen fifty-seven. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thanks, Barb. Next up, resolution number fifteen fifty-eight. This is a resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale not to exceed one point zero four million dollars of general obligation promissory notes. Again, if there's no other questions or comments, we would need a motion to approve.
Move to approve resolution number fifteen fifty-eight.
Motion by Olson.
Second.
Second by Hagan, that we approve resolution number fifteen fifty-eight. Discussion. Barbara, call the roll.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right. Thank you. Justin, thank you for attending tonight. We appreciate it. As always, did a great job. Uh, next up, we have resolution number fifteen fifty-nine. This is a resolution approving the City of Wopaka adjusted urban area boundary. Aaron, you wanna explain this to us?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. Council members, on page seventy, you'll see the proposed resolution, and then on page seventy-one, you'll see the map showing the adjustments that were made to the urban area boundary around our city. So this came forward to us from East Central Regional Plan Commission. You can see right there in the resolution, every ten years, the census bureau defines the boundaries in geographic areas meeting these urban areas. It really doesn't have a huge impact on us, negative or positive. It does potentially adjust how some streets and roadways are classified for, for state and federal funding purposes. I, I can't say that there's a benefit, or, again, or a negative. There's just different pots of money in which some streets are allowed to apply for. And that is pretty much it. That's what we're talking about here, and it was asked of us to approve this, so they can continue with their process in the map adjustments.
All right. So this is coming from East Central, and they are recommending that we approve this resolution number fifteen fifty-six.
Make a motion that we approve resolution number fifteen fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, sorry. Thank you, Henry, for correcting me.
No, it's okay.
I am a year older.
Second.
Uh, second by Velicker, second by Peterson, that we approve resolution number fifteen fifty-nine. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dijkstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
All right. Next up, we have ordinance number zero five, twenty twenty-five. This is an ordinance amending chapter twelve point two seven, providing for the regulation of mobile food establishments licensing permits. And this is the first reading. Jared, I'll throw it right at you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. This one starts on page seventy-two. There is a red line included, and I will get you the page number just a second. A red line, or orange, I guess, in this case, starts on page seventy-six, where you can see the, the changes that are being proposed. So, this was brought forward through a collaboration with the Clerks Department, Parks and Rec, and Community Economic Development. Last year, we started up some movie events. We were trying to do some other city events where we were looking to get food trucks. Upon trying to reach out to those food trucks, it was made apparent to staff that it was very difficult, under our current regulations, to get those food trucks to come. We did our best to try to get something at the movie events, but it was not what we had hoped. So after receiving difficulty with that, we reached out to a few of them to try to understand what the problem was. We found some hurdles within our current application process, as well as some of the ordinances. Just being very definitive and specific on what is required, they had pretty much told us that they do not at all feel welcome. We do not have any local either, and so many of them that would even come would be coming from Appleton, Central Wisconsin, So Fox Valley, Central Wisconsin area. And they had said with, with our provisions we had in place, you know, they just, they did not feel welcome, or that it was worth the drive for them. So, we sat down, we took a look through what we thought were some of the sticking points, hurdles within the application process, still keeping the underlying, what am I looking for? Underlying purpose to still have them pay a fee, you know, be licensed in the city. They're not brick and mortar. Stay away from current food establishments, you know, in order to help them, so that there's a location distant, a required location separation distance that is still within this ordinance, things like that. But at the same time, make it more appealing for those food trucks to come to our events. You know, civic events that we're looking to promote and, and have different opportunities at. So, that's really the purpose of this ordinance. I'm happy to go through it line by line. If you would like, just let me know. Otherwise, I'll open up to any questions. This was recommended by the Plan Commission as well. I believe we had brought it forward to them a couple of times for different reviewing opportunities. Different changes were made. Per the last one, there were a few minor adjustments made, and that is within this ordinance as well. So, happy to answer any specific questions now during council, or of course afterwards, and this is the first reading. So, I, I do believe we're looking to bring it back on the nineteenth. But again, that can always be tabled if there are comments in between now and then.
All right. Anybody have any questions? Again, it's first reading, so we're not gonna act on it tonight, but if you see anything that you, once you look it over again, just let Jared know, and we can talk about it next week, too. But as he said, City Planning Commission did scrutinize us pretty good. So we feel pretty comfortable with what we're bringing forward.
Did you follow up with these food vendors that, if the changes addressed their concerns? I did follow up with a few. One of the main ones I followed up with is actually they're leading an effort to start a Central Wisconsin Food Truck Association. So I did touch base with them. They had said, you know, fantastic, you guys are moving in this direction. Kind of gave some comparisons to Marshfield and Stevens Point, and what they do, and what they, you know, require for fees and things, and we're, we're pretty in line with them. And they had, they had also said, of course, if there's additional questions, or they can be of any assistance to answer questions, that they'd be more than happy to attend a meeting or answer questions via email. So, they've been very helpful in this process as well.
Good question. Thanks. Scott?
Jared, you list several entities that can inspect these people. Is that something they, they do when they first come into town, or every time they come into town, or is it just if there's a complaint?
So, the purpose of the entities, and I'm trying to find exactly the list here. But yeah, it's, it's kind of a, oh, there it is. It's kind of a combination of, of everything that you just said. Depending on what they have when they come into the city, they may need certain inspections. Otherwise, we would subject them to just random inspections. You know, so if the fire department stopped by and saw something wrong, they would work to educate them on the NFPA code. If our, you know, if I saw something going on that they didn't have a license, we'd work to educate that and work with them to get that. So it was just kind of opening, opening up the opportunity for anyone remotely involved in a section of this ordinance to be able to inspect.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Colin.
I guess what I'm reading is, you're changing the fee to down to fifty dollars per year for someone to be a, a licensed food truck vendor within our area. Is that correct?
Yes. Fifty, fifty was the number that was picked, and that was just to be more in line with the other communities. But again, that's, that, that number could be adjusted.
Is this, are these, I, I guess I'm thinking it's a part of WEHA and, and other organizations that, that look to use food trucks at different events. Will this information be public so that people can see who's, who, who are our local food truck opportu, who, who are, who, who can we find to come, come do this?
Yeah. So, so as part of this process, what we hope to do is, we hope to encourage a few more food trucks to come in. We would have them licensed through our SmartGov system, in which at any time, if you wanted to say, hey, could you run a report for me to see, you know, what food trucks have operated in the city before, we could run that. We could get you contact information. So that's meant to be a resource. And then for making this information public, yes, I also would like to put together a little one-page cheat sheet, I guess, simplified sheet, that could also be used. You know, if, if WEHA wanted to get a food truck, you could hand them this one-pager and say, hey, just, just so you know, these are city requirements, you know, pick up after yourself, pretty simple items. You know, please follow them and get the license.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. So it looks like we're gonna see this next week for second reading. All right. Next up, we have resolution number fifteen fifty-six. This is a final resolution authorizing sidewalk improvements and levying of special assessments against benefited property. And this is you, Mr. Behrens.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this resolution can be found on page eighty and eighty-one of the packet. This is our sidewalk replacement program for this year. The, um, authorizing of the assessments, uh, with the improvements, uh, this is the, uh, second time going through this, so after tonight, I'll be, or with tonight, be looking for approval so we can get this, um, adopted, and then, uh, the, the guys can start working on this actually out in the field. So, with, with that, the assessments work, you know, we, we measure it, uh, we come up with a final number and turn that over to the clerk. Those numbers are shown on page eighty-one. The fifty-fifty cost split with all those properties, again, we're kind of focusing a little bit in, on the downtown area, um, and a couple others just outside of it. And, uh, that follows the assessment schedule. Uh, most of them are greater than five hundred dollars, or all of them, excuse me. So, uh, they would have the option to have that placed on their, uh, tax bill and have that paid over eight annual installments. Plans and specs are on file with the city clerk, the estimate you can see, uh, within, and the, uh, we did have a public hearing on this a couple of weeks ago, so everything should be in order, Mayor.
Good. Alright, so you've seen this before, if you, and, but this is the final here, we know the exact numbers. So, again, we'd be looking for a motion to approve, so we can proceed.
Move to approve.
Motion by Olson.
Second.
Second by Dykstra, that we approve of resolution number fifteen fifty-six. Discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Barbara, call the roll.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Alright, Justin, you're still up, office furniture for the new public works facility.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. Uh, starting on eighty-two and going all the way through to ninety-three of the packet, uh, of course, starting off with the memo, which kind of describes the process, uh, we budgeted a hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, for furniture fixtures and equipment. Uh, that was kind of encapsulated with the overall, uh, project approval. Uh, so this includes the furniture, a forklift, a floor scrubber, uh, some racking, and some other minor things that we needed to, I guess, get done in order to move in. Um, we've been working on this for quite a long time, this goes way back to when Russ was here. Uh, started looking into this and worked with a couple of companies early on, and of course, we would like to keep working or work with office outfitters out of Wopaka. Uh, pricing was all very similar, um, and it gave us what we wanted in, uh, quality, styles, and dimensions. So, this is, uh, furnishing offices, uh, for eight different people. Uh, so myself, our facility superintendent, a four-water operator, a street superintendent, and two mechanics. Um, this has gone through a number of changes with everybody kind of needing their own, uh, setup, uh, not just for office use, but then also for, uh, their equipment and tools that they have. And on top of that, we've made a couple tweaks in the office area when we were under construction. So, with that, things have just kind of constantly moved. Uh, what we settled on here is still lacking, uh, a filing system for the water utility. Uh, they could not find something that matches what they have or what they need, so that was pulled out, and they're gonna continue to look for something that can hold all their maps and records, um, for the middle of their office. Uh, so we have a, a number in here from office outfitters and, um, asking for just a tiny contingency of a nice round number of thirty-six thousand. Prices can move, uh, but like any other contingency, if we don't need it, obviously, we won't use it. Uh, Bill has been doing his due diligence to get us the bu, best pricing, uh, that we can here for, um, for our offices. Uh, there's a three-D rendering, um, on page ninety-one, and also a two-day, two-D rendering on ninety-two, uh, with a corrected two-D of the office layout in page ninety-three. So, um, I'll open it up to questions. Uh, the pictures that Bill has shown there are not exact, they're comparisons, they're, I guess, just good, um, graphics of what things will look like, necessarily the, the color, so. Um, I'll just, I'll stop babbling and I'll open it up to questions or comments.
Alright, any questions or, go ahead, Paul.
Um, you said it's the utility department that can't find proper cabinets or storage?
The water utility has a bunch of large maps and small lateral cards, so they, they have like a makeshift one in their current office, so they're trying to find something that's very similar to it. Just recently, they, they think they found something, so we just pulled that out and purchased that as a separate purchase.
You answered my question in that, so.
Yeah, any other questions? Go ahead, Colin.
This is only thirty-six thousand of the hundred and twenty-five that was budgeted, is, it, it, the, the budget was for more things, but is this a pers, this isn't a real large chunk of, or a increase of what you had budgeted for that whole hundred and twenty-five? I guess what I'm trying to get at is, this isn't eating up that money in a, whatever, unfair, un, I don't know.
Disproportionate.
Disproportionate way.
There you go. No, correct, we, I mean, what we have remaining after this will still be, um, enough. I mean, we're, we're looking at a forklift, uh, which we're unsure if we're gonna buy new, used propane or electrics, so we're evaluating those options. Uh, we're targeting roughly twenty-five thousand for that, and maybe a little less. Uh, floor scrubber, we're thinking in six thousand-ish range. Uh, racking, we initially figured fifty thousand, that was from an early quote. Uh, since then, we pivoted and actually have come up with some better solutions, uh, and have actually been way more cost-effective on that, so we should have plenty enough, uh, remaining in here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, so again, any other comments? Uh, the request tonight is to, um, uh, use thirty-six thousand of the money to, uh, buy the furniture that you're, you're seeing in the pages that, in the packet.
I motion to approve the authorization of the purchase and installation of office furniture from office outfitters for an amount not to exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Motion by Dykstra, second by Hagan, that we approve of this purchase. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Corey Nagel. Oops, sorry. Paul Ha, Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Alright, uh, next up, uh, you're still up, Justin, you have, uh, the airport sanitary.
Right, uh, thank you, Mayor. So, this one starts on ninety-four, goes on to one-on-one. This is our lift station for our upcoming sewer extension out to the airport. Uh, this has already gone to the utility board, uh, and was recommended to council for approval. Uh, I'll quickly cap that, uh, discussion there. So, this being our lift station, uh, we cut that out separately from that entire project, put it out to bid, um, as we wanted to get moving on it quicker because of lead times are, are ahead of ti, or so long. Uh, and we also thought we could save some money, uh, with us directly purchasing this piece of equipment versus a contractor who would purchase it and have a marked-up, uh, overhead on top of that. So, we received two bids, uh, from what we expected, uh, the two manufacturers, Smith and Lovelace and Yusemco. Uh, the numbers came in really well, uh, from what we were thinking they were gonna come in. We budgeted five hundred thousand, uh, in the entire project for the lift station. Uh, the lift station itself is not a hundred percent complete with just this two-hundred sixteen. There are some things that the contractor will need to do in the field, uh, such as piping and, uh, a concrete holding tank, I'll say. And, so that will eat into that five hundred thousand dollar budget, but with this volume work did, we feel very good about the overall number. Just a quick cap, so again, the extension is out by the airport, the location of this will be just east of the turnaround, or very close to the airport, uh, or west of the airport terminal parking lot. So, uh, with that, I'll open up to questions, or hopefully a approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Motion?
Sort of.
Oh, go ahead, Colin.
Is there, th, this is to support, uh, the development that's being proposed, are any updates on that development?
Uh, yeah, Colin, I just spoke with, um, the Director of Operations of the Lions today. Uh, they're on the precipice of ordering material for the building, um, this week. Uh, they are looking at an August start date.
Can I add? We, we have been in talks with their, uh, civil engineering company, so they, they are working on a site plan, and we agreed on a location of a lateral for them, so we feel pretty good about it.
Okay. Thank you.
This, you know, again, this is to help with that project, but it's also going to help with other vacant properties that are out there too, so, um, this is, this will be a good investment for that, that area. Yeah, Henry, go ahead.
I apologize if my memory isn't good on this. Uh, we've made a decision whether we're gonna special assess or defer, delay assess some of that project cost. Have we talked at all about that?
Well.
Because it's gonna run past some vacant properties, isn't it?
Right.
I'm just, you know, I don't know.
That's probably more of an errant question here.
Yeah, I, so I believe the plan was to delay assess it.
Yeah, because we don't have to really decide on that right until you get around starting construction, which is a few months away, right?
Well, so we're gonna receive bids for the entire project next week, that'll give us a very good idea of that dollar amount.
You know, I don't envision burdening, uh, all the parcel, of, you know, with a full assessment, but maybe we can underwrite it fifty percent or something. I mean, it's not unusual to special assess. We had a water line put out there.
Yep.
And we special assessed the vacant lots for that. And we actually went off of, I think, what the, uh, boat lift and docks place paid, like, they paid like a third of the cost, or half of the cost, and I understand that the new industry's gonna pay a little bit of the cost as well. So, they're buying down some of the cost. But if the last project was sort of a template, I mean, we did, we didn't go a whole hundred percent because we were only on the hook for fifty or something, and then we, uh, assessed appropriately.
Yeah.
And I think we did it by, I can't, by acreage, and not by lineal feet. Right? Because you got some depth into those parcels, and I think it worked out financially better to do it by acreage.
We've, and we've talked, go ahead, Justin.
Right, so that's the, exactly the direction we're leaning. We haven't made a full hundred percent determination, we're gonna, I would prefer to wait till, uh, bid day, but yes, and we're thinking the acreage, thinking it would be deferred just because of the, the vacancies of some of them properties. And yes, the one property we have the development agreement with has agreed to upfront their assessment cost, um, immediately, so, so that's, yes, that's the direction we're planning on going.
We always have the flexibility to forgive that assessment if we get a project, or you do a development agreement or something. So, we're gonna talk about it in the future, sounds like.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
I'd move to approve the airport sanitary sewer extension lift station procurement, uh, to Yusemco for an amount of two-hundred sixteen thousand and thirty-two dollars.
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, it was, right?
Yep.
Okay, to approve this, uh, airport sanitary sewer extension. Any discussion? Barbara, call the roll? Oh, Colin, I'm sorry.
I was gonna mention that I think it's really a, a terrific, uh, uh, statement about our, our group here, that's, uh, worked so hard to, to separate this out in order to try and accommodate somebody who wants to build here. I think it shows that the city of Wopaka is, is, uh, committed to getting people to come to our, our, our city and, and build their projects, and we're going above and beyond, uh, to, to make this project happen. So, well, well done, and, and, I, I guess that's all.
Thanks, Colin. Good comment. Anybody else? Comments, questions? Alright, we have a motion and a second, we're looking for Barb to call the roll.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Henry Velicker.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Colin Dykstra.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, license report number sixteen sixty-six, you can see that on page one-on-two of your packet, there's one individual that is applying for an operator's license in the city of Wopaka. Uh, we would need a motion to approve. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Hagan, that we approve license report sixteen sixty-six. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say nope. Motion carried. License report number sixteen sixty-seven, this is a taxi cab driver. Uh, again, we have one individual that is applying to, uh, have a light, uh, permit to drive taxi cabs in the city of Wopaka for our service. Any, uh, anybody want, wanna make a motion?
Motion to approve license, uh, report sixteen sixty-seven.
Second.
Uh, motion by Velicker, second by Dykstra, that we approve license report sixteen sixty-seven. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say nope. Motion carried. Uh, communications recommendations of the mayor, uh, one, tomorrow, don't forget, uh, we, our city planning commission meeting has been, was moved from the first Wednesday to tomorrow, so that we do have a city planning commission meeting tomorrow night. You've obviously already gotten the agenda in the packet, just wanted to remind you of that. And, uh, city council meeting, of course, we have our regular city council meeting next Tuesday, so we're having two in a row, obviously. Uh, and then, also, don't forget, the first, uh, meeting in April has been, city council meeting has been changed to the third, April third, instead of April second, because April second is election day, and our ordinances do not allow us to have city council meetings on that date. Uh, also, city planning commission is planning on meeting at four-thirty. Jared, Jared? Right? Four-thirty on the third, so right, right before the city council meeting, they'll be, will, will be done by six o'clock, so we have that. Also, um, if you, when you walked in, I don't know if you saw it or not, but there are cupcakes, uh, right behind Colin over there, uh, please grab one. Colin was nice enough to pick up some cupcakes, uh, to celebrate something today, I'm not sure what it is.
Your birthday.
So, Colin, thank you for that. Anybody else have anything for the, go to the meeting tonight?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Hagan, second by Olson, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Uh, we're adjourned at seven oh nine PM, have a great night, everybody. Grab a cupcake, please.